Is this on? Is it on? Is this on? All right, we got it. Thank you. We are about ready to get started, so we ask that you take your seat. Thank you. The Ways and Means Committee of the Board of Aldermen is now called to order. Madam Clerk, we ask that you call the roll.
Alderman Cruzen. Alderman Florida. Alderman Behringer. Alderman Williamson. Alderman Moore. Alderman French. Alderman Vaccaro. Alderman Carter. Chairman Kennedy. Alderman Florida. You have eight presidents, you have a quorum.
Before we get started into testimony, we first like to bring up Mr. Gerald S. Brooks, who is the Director of Community Relations and Programming here at this particular library.
I'm going to be very brief, but whenever we have something at one of our homes, we like to welcome you to, and this is one of our homes. We have seventeen homes around the city. And we are all about, as a library, you know, about information, education, and getting the information out to people. And when the Alderman called and asked if he could use this location, we said, "Of course," and we knew what he wanted to do, and we thank you all for being here. Good to see this many folks here, too. So, thank you, welcome on behalf of our board and our Executive Director, Walden McGuire. Please enjoy the evening, and thank you for being here.
On behalf of our Ways and Means Committee, we, too, would also like to welcome you here today. It is pleasing to see the turnout that we've had. Today is the day that we are accepting as a committee public testimony related to the city budget. On the table, as you came through the front door, there was an overview of the city budget, as well as several other documents that could help you understand the whole budget process. Again, we want to welcome you here today. It is our pleasure to have this. This is only the second year that the committee has had a public hearing to accept testimony on the city budget. Last year was the first year that we did so. We wanted to, as a committee, to broaden the process of the city budget process. That process begins in January of each year, when the city budget director requests of each department to provide to him the various needs from that department. The budget director looks at that information, gathers and compiles it, and then he interfaces back and forth with the various departments to get them most of the time to bring that budget within reason in relationship to the amounts of money that are being projected for the previous year, for the next coming year. After all of that is completed, the budget director submits that proposed budget to the Board of V and A. The Board of V and A is composed of the mayor, the comptroller, and the president of the Board of Aldermen. They look over it, make changes, and this year they made quite a few changes, and then by May 1st, it must be submitted to the Board of Aldermen. The Board of Aldermen has until the end of June to pass a budget. July 1st is the beginning of the budget year. Typically, what the Board of Aldermen does is to assign that board bill related to the budget to this committee, the Ways and Means Committee. That committee calls in various departments and department heads and listens to what they say are their needs in relationship to the overall projected income. In some instances, this committee may make recommendations back to the Board of V and A to make changes within the budget. The Board of Aldermen cannot put a line item in the budget, but they can cut items out of the budget and make recommendations where that money should go. That process goes back and forth, because that does not mean that the Board of V and A always agrees with the Ways and Means Committee. That process goes on for a time, depending upon what's in the budget. And finally, a final budget is created and goes through the ordinance process at the Board of Aldermen, knowing that it must be completed by the end of June, because July 1st starts the new budget. What this committee did, I believe in its wisdom and its desire to broaden this process, was to have a public portion of the budgetary process. Earlier this month, we had a hearing that was open to the public that the budget director went over the budget for people to understand. Since then, the Board of Aldermen has met with the various departments and is now getting ready to look at it and make its recommendations. But before this committee made its recommendations, it wanted to hear from you, the public, and citizens of this city, before it sat down and deliberated and made its recommendations back to the Board of V and A. So that's why we're here today, and how long this process has been going. We're here today to hear from you. There are sign-in sheets. Whether you sign pro or con, it doesn't matter, we still want to hear from you. We ask that we adhere to several rules. Do we have the sheet? May I see? We're asking that you limit your comments to about... I need to see how many folks are there. We should be able to do five minutes per person when you come forward to speak. You can speak from the podium. If you have any written material that you would like the committee to have, you can give it to the clerk, and it will be distributed to this committee. We welcome any written input that you have, as well as your verbal testimony here today. We ask that we do adhere to certain rules. One, that's the time period. We will be timing you, and I would not like to have to gavel you off. So please, just when you get to your time and I point, just gracefully exit. That would help. Also, this is a public process. We are here to hear various opinions. We may not always agree with those opinions, but we would like for us to be polite to one another, because we each have a right to that opinion. So we don't want to hear anybody booing someone else or the rest of that, because it doesn't work for us to be able to hear what's going on and to listen to people. This is for this committee somewhat of a listening session, to hear what your thoughts and opinions are about the city budget and where some of its financial priorities should be. Again, we will have just five minutes per individual, and we will call each name when we come to that person's name. The continuation, we will, at some point, have to close the signing in if others come in who would wish to speak during this particular session. We do have one bill that we will hear before we begin the public testimony. This is a bill that is sponsored by our President of the Board of Aldermen, who will make his presentation to the committee, and I believe he has several amendments on this. Then immediately after that, we will begin the process of the public testimony on the budget. We do welcome and look forward to your testimony. We're not here just as a show. We want to actually hear what are your thoughts and opinions about this budget. It did affect this committee's decision-making last year, and I would suppose that it may do so this year, as we begin to hear from people. So again, we welcome and we thank you for being here. It's our intent, hopefully, to continue to have these types of public meetings, and again, to begin to generate more enthusiasm and participation in the political electoral process here in the city of St. Louis. So thank you very much, and we'll move forward with our meeting here today. I'm the Chair of the Committee, Terry Kennedy. You've heard most of our names. To my right here, we have Alderman Vaccaro, Frank Williamson, Donna Behringer, our President of the Board, Lewis Reed. We have Alderman Lyda Cruzen, whose ward this particular place sits in. She let us come today. We have here Alderman Antonio French, Sam Moore, Chris Carter, and our clerk, all the way to my left, Lisa. We, again, will begin with hearing from the President of the Board. You have... You're making the presentation? To this microphone here, yes.
Good evening, and thanks to each and every one of you for giving me an opportunity to present this board bill today. And also, I want to thank all of the residents that have come out to participate and take part in this budget process. I really have to commend the Ways and Means Committee for making a concerted effort, the second year in a row, to make sure that we get engagement from the people of the city of St. Louis, because after all, it's all of our tax dollars. We all have a stake in it, whether it's the crime rate, whether it's, you know, development happening within our prospective wards and districts. All of these things impact us, and this is the process where we have an opportunity to change the dynamics of some of that. So appreciate this committee giving the people an opportunity to get engaged. Board Bill Number Two is for the establishment of a bond oversight committee to ensure efficiency, you know, equality, equity, timeliness, and accountability on bond expenditures, current and future bond expenditures, right? You know, we're looking at this general obligation bond, and we, every ten to fifteen years, the city of St. Louis goes through the process of taking a look at capital projects that have been long outstanding and passing a general obligation bond to address some of those needs. Well, one of the things that we found out through this current process is I can't find ten people that really understand what that last general obligation bond was used for and where that money went, right? And so it's important that we engage the residents, we engage the citizen, and we put an oversight board together so that we can assure that on the back end of the process, that there's some accountability and there's some reporting back on the expenditure of those funds, right? And that's what this committee will do. It's going to be a nine-member committee, you know, if it passes, and I hope it does. Three of each appointed by myself, well, not the President of the Board of Aldermen, the comptroller, and the mayor, right? And we have three amendments for the board bill, just based on information received from members of the committee and other Aldermen throughout the city of St. Louis for things that they'd like to see in the bill.
We have the amendments before us?
No, we do not have the amendments before us. There's three amendments. Two of them just cleaning up some language, and one amendment expanding the qualifications for some of the members that would be appointed.
We need to make a motion on each amendment?
We will.
Yes, yes.
What we could do right now is entertain any questions for our President. Alderman Cruzen.
A couple of things, Mr. President. This bill will likely pass. It looks like it will pass before we even put the bond issue before the voters. And so they'll establish this bond oversight committee with no bonds to oversight or oversee. I mean, is the timing of this proper or anything?
Yes, it is proper, because it's not specific to just this GO bond. It's for any future bonds that we may pass. I think it's important that we establish the committee. We get this ordinance out. That's why this ordinance really needs to move before this bond or any other bonds move. But it's going to be, you know, it's in perpetuity.
So if this goes into effect, then we will... And assuming that the general obligation bond issue gets placed before the voters, and assuming that the voters pass it, then this committee will actually have something to do.
Absolutely.
For maybe two to three years, until the general obligation bonds are...
No, it will take... It'll probably take ten years or better for all the money to be spent, because they don't issue them all at once. So if we pass a $175 million bond initiative, you know, they may issue $25 million, another $25, and so on and so forth. It'll generally take, you know... By the time you spend it and complete all the projects and everything else associated with it, and issue the bonds to get the money, it'll take a while.
Are there any other questions from the committee? If not, would you address the board, the amendment number one?
Yes, Amendment Number One is just cleaning up some language, starting on page one, line 18, after the words, "Board of Estment and Apportionment." We're going to insert the following words and figures. With each member of the Board and Estment and Apportionment appointing three individuals, right? So that's line, page one, line 18, after the words, "Board of Estment and Apportionment."
Are there any questions from members of the committee on the amendment? Now, you're making a motion, then? Second. We'll wait for the clerk to figure it out.
What was that?
It's been moved and seconded, that we adopt Amendment Number One. Would you call... You call the roll.
Alderman Cruzen. Alderman Florida. Alderman Behringer. Alderman Williamson. Alderman Moore. Alderman French. Alderman Vaccaro. Alderman Carter. President Reed. Chairman Kennedy. Nine yes votes.
By your vote, we have adopted Amendment Number One. Amendment Number Two.
Thank you for that first one. Amendment Number Two is again on page one, line 22. And it begins with this. Begins on page one, line 22, after the words, "The committee shall elect..." We're going to insert the following words and figures, "by majority vote and from within the membership."
Any questions on Amendment Two? Been moved and seconded, that we adopt Amendment Number Two. Request for previous roll, any opposition to previous roll? Seeing no opposition by your vote, we have adopted Amendment Number Two. Amendment Number Three.
Thank you for that one. Amendment Number Three, this is the amendment said, board bill, beginning on page one, line 18, after the words, "By the Board of Aldermen, we're going to insert the following words and figures. No less than two of the committee members shall have background in engineering or planning. No less than two of the committee members shall have background in accounting or finance. No less than one of the committee members shall have background, elite background in law."
Any questions for the sponsor on Amendment Number Three? No questions? We can entertain a motion? Been moved and seconded, that we adopt Amendment Number Three. There's been a request for previous roll, any opposition to previous roll? Seeing none by your vote, we have adopted Amendment Number Three.
Well, thank you.
Close on the bill.
Thank you for your support in the amendments. I'm just asking for your favorable approval of Board Bill Number Two, and also for your support on the Florida Board to get this board bill out. I think it's a very important board bill, and it's much of what we see here tonight. We give the people, the taxpayers, an opportunity to really engage in the process, and we give them, we turn some accountability back over to them, so appreciate it.
Questions from members of the committee?
They're going to be appointed for two-year terms, and they're going to expire in staggering terms. So, you know, it'll be December 31st on the odd year, and then the following year, it'll be December 31st for the next four. So the first five will go out, the first two years, and then two years later, the next four will go out, yeah, that will take.
Alderman Moore. Mr. President, what took so long?
I don't know. I don't know, but I know it's a long time coming, and I know it's an important thing, and the people really want to see it. So I appreciate the help that everybody's given us to get it this far.
No other questions, we can entertain a motion? Been moved and seconded, that we... Adopted Board Bill Number Two as amended. Been a request for previous roll, any opposition to previous roll? Seeing no opposition by your vote, we have adopted Board Bill Number Two as amended.
Thank you.
Well, now begin the public hearing part, where we take in testimony. Thanks for putting up with us on that one, but you needed to get the bill out as soon as possible. When you come forward, you can use the podium. Please identify yourself by name and address, because our clerk does take a log of this. We'll call forward... Remember, we have five minutes each. We'll call forward Mr. Aaron Williams, speaking against the budget?
Against the budget. I'll tap my little tapper here. I represent a concept called recycling for humanity that involves creating jobs for less fortunates based on recycling, by introducing and having recycling in this community. This concept has been put in action from the day that the new stadium was built. We, the Cardinals partnered with St. Patrick's Center, Downtown St. Louis Partnership. Oh, I thought you did that. You wanted again, okay. Can I start over and get a whole new minute? My name is Aaron Williams, and I'm with Recycling for Humanity, and I'm a City of St. Louis resident, business owner, and I also run a charity. So, the St. Louis Cardinals partnered with Downtown St. Louis Partnership, St. Patrick's Center, Waste Management, and someone I just... And someone else, Downtown St. Louis Partnership, I think, and created six jobs every game that have endured to pick up recyclables outside the stadium. And this has been going on and on. These are six jobs, four people, every game, eighty-one games a year. So this concept is also applied to Earth Day, when they were doing this with a homeless veteran grant, and they were having recycling and composting being done at major events downtown. This weekend, the Rib Fest wound up having zero recycling. Every single piece of trash, every single piece of waste wound up being going to, at taxpayer expense, to the landfill. Every sidewalk in the city of St. Louis does not have recycling. I don't know of any park that has recycling bins away from a venue for all the water bottles. When Jerry's water bottle, the cameraman, leaves his pocket, he will find it very difficult to put it in a recycling bin today. And so this can be... When we just wound up having, and I spoke at the bill for the three-day events for Memorial Day and Labor Day weekends, the company that wound up getting that, providing, will be providing that service, was from California. They were right behind me when I spoke and said they've never been able to put on an event in California without ninety percent of the waste being diverted away from the event site. And yet, the city did absolutely nothing to have licensing with wording that would have mandated recycling. So you can give event operators and anyone who gets an event license from the city, and this does go to your budget. You can create licenses that are revenue generating and job creating at the same time. And so you can give the event operator the option to either provide their own recycling service, or they can have at a very high expense a license where they would be using, for example, St. Louis Earth Day to do the recycling for them, if they did not have their own team. So recycling, the commodities that they're recycling actually are sellable. You can sell plastic, you can sell glass. You can ask any homeless person in this town. They certainly know you can sell the aluminum cans very readily. You can also sell the cardboard. And so I'm asking you, when you look at your budget, can't we have recycling and composting mandatory at events that specifically have more than 500 attendees? That clearly winds up justifying the service. The next thing is about two years ago, many of you were approving a budget, and I did try to introduce at that time a nickel surcharge on every bottle of water that would be sold in a city that has the best tasting water in the United States. This surcharge, which a lot of you will go "hump-hump" at, generates a million dollars a year for the city of Chicago. So I'd like you to look at the streets budget. I'd like you to look at the Forest Park budget and start saying, you know, when all these water bottles wind up being put in their trash cans, and most importantly, when you're also looking at, in every one of your wards, a lack of public water fountains, a broken water fountain, you have to ask, wouldn't that nickel surcharge make a lot of sense to help with the budget item that you have for maintaining public water fountains, for providing more public water fountains for those who clearly can't afford a bottle of water? And I thank you for taking this under your consideration.
Our next speaker is Jamala Rogers.
Good evening. My name is Jamala Rogers. I'm at 1401 Rowan Avenue, and I've been a longtime advocate for youth in the city of St. Louis. Today, I'm representing Advocates for Youth. We are multiracial, intergenerational, regional group of service providers, academics, parents, policymakers, leaders, and youth. Our focus is on adolescents and teens. And unlike the zero-to-six age group, this age group that is from 12 to 17 rarely gets the positive attention and resources that they need. So in the continuum of youth development, that is a very important youth age group to zero in on. But we also know that from 12 to 17 gets a lot of bad reputation. There is a robust body of evidence that screams to us to pay attention to these teens. This is a group that is often forgotten, misunderstood, marginalized, and then sadly, in some cases, even criminalized. So as the great American abolitionist Frederick Douglass said, "It is easier to build strong children than to repair broken men and women." So as part of my testimony, two of our colleagues are not here today. Dr. Norm White, who heads up the St. Louis University's Department of Criminology and Criminal Justice, and Dr. Jason Purnell, who heads up Washington University's Health Department. They both have submitted testimony to that effect that I'll submit with mine. So there's four areas in our working agenda that we've been zeroing in on. They are recreation, education, health, including mental health, and employment. And those are not necessarily standalone items. Those are areas that both overlap and interconnect. And so we began to see a picture painted of our young people when they don't get the resources that they need, that they engage in risky behavior. And so there's a report out now that says eighty-five percent of young people in St. Louis are engaged in at least one risky behavior. And so that has implications when those start to compound. So there are a number of questions that we have for the panel, particularly around jobs, like where are the summer jobs? Slate used to have hundreds of summer jobs, and young people are coming to us asking, "Where are those jobs? How can they get connected with jobs that not only get them to be able to take care of some of their own basic needs, but also to get skills for the future?" When we don't pay attention to this age group, lots of negative things happen, and we don't need that. It is not an accident the biggest line item for the city budget is juvenile courts. So, and that's not to say they should not be getting the money that they get. It's just that the preventive side needs to be increased, and so that's what we're here about. I was very happy to see over the weekend that the African Arts Festival that probably this is the 23rd, 24th year out in Forest Park, included a Safari Teen Village. And they did that as a demand from young people and teens saying they wanted more age-appropriate activities for... age-appropriate activities for that. And so young people want those kind of activities to engage in, and if we're listening, we will be responsive to them. Some of these don't necessarily require more money, it requires a new way of thinking, it requires retooling, it requires a basic appreciation and understanding of what young people need, and I'm talking specifically for adolescents and teens. That is a kind of wild group, as you know, some of you all may not remember your teens, but there's folks on the panel that look like they might remember that. And so we want to make sure that we are being responsive to those needs, particularly, like I said, with recreation, job training, health and mental health, and with the, with education. So I, I want to request in the future that the budgets that deal with young people, that those line items be pulled out so that we can better see how much money the city is actually spending on youth regardless of age. That's kind of difficult to tell now in the budget, because we intend to continue to monitor that so that we can look at the outcomes and the results to see if they're matching up with the kind of money that we're spending. And all across the country, cities are, even though they're cash strapped, they're doing innovative things with young people. In Boston, Mayor Walsh just put out a million dollar money that young people from twelve to twenty will be able to save what they want done with that money. And they, they are in no, they're in the same kind of straits that we are in St. Louis. So to sum up, we need a breakout of the items, the line items that are being spent for youth, and to pay more attention to that particular age group.
All right, thank you. Our, our next speaker would be, I believe is Yasmeera Jackson?
Yasmeera.
Yasmeera, pardon me.
Hello, I'm Yasmeera Jackson. I am representing Advocating for Youth Board, and address is fourteen oh one Rowan. As Jamala said, she spoke about one of the areas that we are looking into, which is recreation, and that's what I will speak to you all about today. Specifically about the rec centers being utilized by our young adults and children. They're basically underutilized because there aren't enough programs for them, specifically for girls. They really just have basketball and boxing, there are very few programs for girls, so I definitely think that should be more utilized for our young women. Furthermore, there have also been two private rec centers that were introduced not too long ago, that is Carondelet and O'Fallon. Those are actually leading to less accessibility because you have to pay for them, as opposed to having more money for the rec centers that you don't have to pay for, that you can go to for free. So I don't, not sure what happened to that money. I was told that they were funded by PPI, so they need to be, more funds need to be utilized for maybe more scholarships, and definitely for them to be free. And there needs to be more programs, since we have mental health and other health things that can also be put into the rec centers, since not that many people go to them, then they can also be included, like addressing mental health symptoms, health for women specifically, and health for boys, you know, just having those would be really helpful, and might also lead to more people attending the rec centers overall. Bye-bye.
All right, thank you. Next we have Anna Ginsburg.
Hello, Aldermen and Alderwomen, and Lisa. For those of you who don't know me, my name is Anna Ginsburg. I live at seventy-twenty Stanley in the Franz Park neighborhood, and I was the Director of Neighborhood Stabilization at the city for ten years. During that time I also administered Justice Department grants, including the grant that set up the Continuing Juvenile Courts Night Watch Program. I now work as a consultant for nonprofits, but like Jamala, I am here tonight representing Advocates for Youth. We're a broad-based collaborative, and we want to see our resources going to help our young people, our teenagers ages twelve and above, all the way up into mid twenties. So we are witnessing another rise in homicides. It happens every few years. Homicides go up, police action is intensified, homicides go down, and the pattern starts over again. But what makes these deaths even more tragic is that we know a lot of things that we could do to address this problem, but we've never really had the political will to do it. The Justice Department has, has shown that there are very simple strategies that we can use to keep our young people from entering the criminal justice system. After-school programs, academic support programs for kids who need it, mentoring programs, and job training and employment programs are also crucial, especially if you talk to young people. Talk to a young people, a young person, and they are very, very likely to say what they want as a job. I think I have my notes out of order here. I know this is a, a time of budget cuts and belt tightening, and I also know that there's a proposition, S-money, that is being used to fund some of these programs. But there's one place that the city could find more than enough money to keep these programs going, and that is the controversial TIF program. East West Gateway put out a study in two thousand and nine that showed that St. Louis had granted one point six billion dollars in TIF abatement since the program began in nineteen eighty-six. About four hundred and forty-three million, or twenty-eight percent of those, have actually generated replacement revenue. So there's over a billion dollars in lost revenue. And by the way, this is something that probably bears greater scrutiny. I mean, why is it that, you know, this money isn't coming back to the city? And a frac, a, a fraction of that money could provide after-school care and job training for every youth, and tutoring and mentoring for those who need it. So I'm here to say tonight that I think it's time to shift the paradigm. Tax breaks for corporations that don't result in economic development need to go on the back burner. So please, stop giving these breaks to, to corporations when the city is on the losing end of this deal. The corporate welfare isn't helping our youth. I want to see us devote our resources so that we can help all of our young people in St. Louis succeed.
Thank you. Zach Chasnov.
Thank you. My name is Zach Chasnov. I live at fifty-seven forty Holly Hills in the city. Some of you know me as the participatory budgeting guy. I would just like to take a second and just say, I, Mira, I would just like to echo everything Anna just said as being accurate and true, and really not a matter of ideology, but a matter of mathematics. So when it comes to the budget, and I always appreciate having these forums to be able to forward ideas and have a conversation, I would say that I am less interested in what the money is spent on, although those of you who know me know that I have some opinions about that. And I'm more interested in sort of who is making the decisions about how the money is being spent. So civic engagement is a large problem in St. Louis, and, but it's not unique to St. Louis by any means. I think nationally, people across the board are feeling very divorced from the processes that govern their lives. But I think that, you know, there are ways to get people back involved with these processes, and there's exciting innovations happening all over the place. So while forums like these are great for input, there's a big difference between input and actual participation in those processes. And what happened this year, some of you may know, was that Christine Ingracia implemented a program called participatory budgeting in her ward. And this is really a big leap of faith on her part, but what she did was she gave people that live in her ward a vote on how forty percent of capital improvement money was spent in her area. And we saw during that process, people were just thirsty to participate. These were not people that are the quote-unquote usual suspects who show up for almost every single neighborhood meeting. These were people who have long felt that their voice did not matter in these processes, who were coming out fairly strongly. And so, you know, so what were the results? We actually had in the sixth ward the highest turnout by percent of any district in the United States who is working with participatory budgeting. So this was something that got us recognized nationally, and, and, you know, was a big deal, and really shows, I think, the hunger that St. Louis citizens have to engage again in these kinds of decisions. And then I just want to talk a, a little bit briefly about the quality of, of that turnout. So in a ward that is fifty-one percent minority citizens, there was fifty-eight percent of the voters who were minority, and sixty-three percent female participants. And I think this was, this was something that really spoke to Christine's ability to also engage with community organizations, so not a large staff in the sixth ward, but really understanding the needs of people who engage with community members sort of on the regular, to be able to identify areas where higher outreach was needed. So working with community groups, a big part of this, I think. And so I'll just close by saying, you know, I encourage people to look into participatory budgeting more, ways that we can expand it across the city. I think this is something that we can get creative with, it's sort of, the limitations are our own imaginations a lot of the times. And I would also encourage people to talk to Alderwoman Ingracia, and just kind of get her feeling for how it went in her area. She has more, you know, demographic breakdowns that we can get to people and everything like that, so thank you guys for your time.
Thank you. Jennifer Jordan.
Hello, I'm Jennifer Jordan. I live at thirty-two twenty-four Lafayette, and I am here as part of the Human Service Club from Forest Park Community College. We've recently moved to the William J. Harrison Center over on Cass Avenue. Prior to going over there, one of our classes, we saw a movie called The Delmar Divide, and as soon as you cross Delmar, it looks like a desert over there. So as future human services professionals, we decided that since we're going to be there anyway, we might as well do some work with the community. On April twenty-sixth, we had something we called Inner City Change, and we invited the neighborhood over to various tables and booths and to get information about, and we also had a survey that we had them fill out so that we could find out how we could best serve them. Most of the teenagers that we talked to, our age group is sixteen to twenty-six, and over and over and over again, we kept hearing, "There's nothing to do around here, it's too far to a rec center. My mom won't let me walk that far." And again, as Ms. Rogers had said, the biggest enemy to a teenager getting in trouble is boredom. I mean, I've just got finished raising two kids, they're both out of the house now, and the last thing I ever let happen is for them to get bored, because that's when they start throwing the balls in the house, you know? We're catty-corner from Vashon High School. I don't understand, they keep saying, "Why can't the high school be, or at least portions of the high school, be open on the weekends so they have something to do?" And very much like the several other people that have already testified, you have to, I have to agree that this is a pivotal part of a kid's life. They have to have somebody to help them focus all this extra energy in a positive way instead of a negative way. And I'm hoping you'll give some consideration to extra monies to support teenagers in these, in this extremely underserved neighborhood. Thank you.
Thank you.
Yes.
While I greatly appreciate what you have to say and what your work you're doing, I would caution you about the language. For those of us who live north of Delmar, don't always like our community described as a desert. I would invite you to come to the Penrose, O'Fallon neighborhood, and I would go there to the most beautiful neighborhood in the city.
Oh, I apologize, that was not my intention.
No problem, thank you.
Barb Murphy.
I'm Barb.
Medina Brown.
Hi, my name is Medina Brown. I stay at forty-oh-nine West Bell, and my concern is mostly what everybody was saying about youth, that I used to be in a youth organization with a lot of children, and if you don't catch them while they are small, once they grow up, that's why we're spending so much money in the, in the jail system right now. All that money we wasting to put them in there, if you get them now, they won't have their problems, so all that money's being wasted. I figure it should go to help these children, because it's guaranteed, I had like sixty children, we was in a drum and bugle corps, and these children, east St. Louis, everywhere. We used to have to go pick them up, because some of their parents wouldn't participate, but that didn't stop us from helping these children. They wanted something to do. And so a lot of them that got in trouble, they seen that you care about them, and when you show that you care about these children, they will straighten up, and that will prevent them. I have six children, none of them had, I had no problem with none of them, because they all was in the same thing. And my other concern is, everything we say in here today, I just want it to be where it's not going to be like, well, you know, after the meeting, everybody say, I want our voice to be exactly, you know, confirming something to be done, because I don't, I don't think we should come out here in a waste of time, just coming here saying things and just get swept under the rug. I mean, this is very, we appointed and paid or voted for everybody on their board to be here, so we should be able, listen to us, just like y'all wanted to come out and vote for me, do this for me, I'm gonna promise I'm gonna do this. So when the promise come, once you get in there, don't get laxie daisy on us, you know what I'm saying? Do what you said you was gonna do.
Right.
You know, you get in there, you get comfortable, then you don't want to do nothing, then as soon as the next election come, I haven't seen some of these people. Then here they come again, putting cans on my porch, with a flashlight on it, "Vote for me, state rep," that never seen them a day in my life. So don't do people like that, you know, you, you lay up here and you think, well, hey, they voted for me, I'm cool now. Then when we call you and try to get something, don't get no phone calls. So that's my concern. Don't have us out here, all out here talking. It's meaningful for all of us to be out here, we out here for a reason. And everything, everybody just sitting up there, please recognize what we doing, because you saying what you got in, you can be out.
Good evening, Alderpeople. The flashlight pen would be mine. And if I win my state rep race, you get lifetime batteries for it. My name is Bill Haas. I live at forty-three ninety-six McPherson for the last twelve years, in the Central West End for the last twenty-six. I'm in my third term, my twelfth year, on the St. Louis Elected School Board, so you know our children are important to me. I'm also a candidate for state rep in the Democratic primary in this seventy-seventh district, so you know jobs and economic development are important to me. In my opinion, no problem in our community is more important than youth, gangs, and the violence in our neighborhoods. And the answer to this problem is jobs and education, and I ask you to find a way to use city money for this problem, and I have a suggestion as to how to do it. As some of you know, I've run for several offices over the years besides school board. The first one was Mayor of St. Louis, which I've run for several times. And when I first ran in nineteen ninety-three, I said that I would have a thousand gang members building houses. And the audience has sort of snickered, because it's so ambitious, and I understood that. But I haven't let go of that idea now, twenty-one years later. Every youth, gang member- Every youth, gang member or not, or other unemployed person should be to work building houses. Other cities have done it. Building houses creates jobs and economic development. Most of our kids on the street, given an alternative to the life they lead now, will take it, I believe. They should build or rehab houses for their families to live in, or sell and use the money to build more houses. But we need seed money for this, and I hope the city can find the money to do this. Other state and local, other state and local and federal monies for job training and housing and such should be available, and if I'm our state rep, I will fight for that from the state, of course. These kids should be going to school in the morning for the reading and math skills they need, and working for pay in the afternoon, building houses if they keep up their studies. We should start with one house, with some experienced and some new workers. Then when that house is sold, they should split up and build two houses with new workers, then four houses, and so forth. Habitat for Humanity should help. Profit and nonprofit construction companies should help, and the unions and school districts should help. When I'm out on the street campaigning lately between Delmar and Page, Van De Venner and Newstead, there are new houses on every block. There are also rundown or abandoned houses. Some of the work could be done to fix up houses for seniors and those on fixed incomes who cannot afford to do it themselves. And if I had my preference, we should start with the beautiful houses at forty-one seventy-one and forty-one seventy-five West Bell. One is three to five thousand square feet, the other's a little bit smaller. They were beautiful once, and they should be again. We have to, may have to make condos or apartments out of them, but let's start somewhere. No investment in our community would have more far-reaching effects. The details will be challenging, but can be worked out. As I said, I believe other cities like Cincinnati, Ohio, have had success with similar programs bringing construction jobs to gang members. Let's set our vision high and not take no for an answer. Let's convince our children of what is the right thing to do and inspire them to do it. I hope you'll consider this proposal in your deliberations. Thank you for your time.
One committee member has a question for you.
Bill, just curious, are you in any mentoring, like Big Brothers program? You know, if you start, and anybody in this room starts with Big Brothers, which I have, if everybody picks up someone, it'll make a difference. You're not going to start with a program this large and hope, but if you start with one kid, and if everybody in this room mentors one kid, it makes a difference. Are you mentoring anybody?
I'm not.
I would suggest you might.
Well, that's an important idea, and I'm not going to disparage it. I've been on the school district for twelve years, trying to educate twenty-five to fifty-thousand of our kids in a way that would make them proud and give them the skills to compete on a level playing field. We still have less than thirty percent of our third graders reading at grade level. We have a long way to go. So my sons, my baby mom and I were never married, and my son had a Big Brother as he was growing up, as well as his mother and myself. He's turned out better than the both of us combined. He's a math teacher in the St. Louis Public Schools. His qualities seem to have skipped a couple generations, but he's just wonderful, and we have a good relationship. So I know about the value of Big Brothers. I've chosen to try to spend my time making changes at a larger level also, on the school district and in other offices I've run for, so the two aren't mutually exclusive. I can't stop gang violence by mentoring a young man. I can help him turn out well, but we need programs for all our young men and women who don't have an alternative. And so I ask the city to help fund such a program.
Okay. Thank you. I believe it's Jenny, is it Jenny Fong? Jenny?
Oh, it said defer.
You said defer? Okay. Jake Lionfield?
I defer as well.
Okay. Is it Johnny Archer? Archery? I may have it incorrectly. Is there Arch, Archer, Archie? Archie?
Janey.
Janey? Pardon me.
That's okay. It came up sooner than I thought. Good evening. I'm Janey Archie with the Coalition Against Police Crimes and Repression. I live at forty-seven thirty-four Alaska Avenue. I'm not really here to go over the specifics of anything related to the bill itself, because under the steadfast leadership of Mr. Kennedy, the Coalition has been working with him for decades on this issue of police oversight and civilian review. So I guess our coalition is wondering, well, hoping, of course, that it's, you know, going to get the chance to get passed this year and introduce this summer and have the hearings and everything. But we're really concerned and want to know from the committee where the money is outlined in the budget that I was looking for, if there's serious consideration for having a police oversight bill. I think that's the new name now, possibly. But anyway, so that's our major concern, is that there has to be money attached to anything that you have as a department or have an office with staff. And we really want to make sure that the money is going to be there to fund the police oversight department that if, when we do pass it, I won't say if, when. Thanks.
Okay. Thank you. I believe it's David Nihart Flores?
Narrett.
Narrett.
Ellis Island.
I'm myrtleizing names.
So my name's David Narrett Flores. I am at fourteen forty-five South Eighteenth Street. I wanted to speak today about crime prevention programs, as well as infrastructure within the city budget and other programs, because, and specifically to the issue of developing, as we've seen, you know, and some of the themes of the idea of accountability and transparency within public funds and how money is being spent. We're talking about, we're talking about earlier in this meeting, talking about the bond issue that's coming up. And that within that bond issue, there is funds right now for a real-time intelligence center for the police department. And I want to ensure that when, because I do believe that it should be and will be, when the real-time intelligence center for that funding is taken out of the bond issue, that it makes sure that, ensure that that funding does not go within the public safety budget or within the infrastructure budget for the police capital improvements. A couple of reasons why for that is, one, that I do not believe that a real-time intelligence center, either in a bond issue or a budget, is capital improvement, that instead is the changing of police policy. And because we're talking about accountability and transparency within all of our policies, a changing of police policy should be open to, open to a conversation and not hidden or sunken into a bond issue or into a capital improvement budget. Second, and then within that, I also believe that there are proven alternatives to the, to the expansion of mass surveillance within our communities. Some of these community improvements that are real capital improvement, are real structural improvements include city street lamps and the investment in city street lamps throughout the city, as well as opening public parks and ensuring that public parks are open and accessible, as well as the access of more, access to more third spaces and walkable streets in areas within our community. Because I'm a firm believer in not only in this accountability and transparency process, but also that mass surveillance and encouragement of mass surveillance that a real-time intelligence center would provide is something that breaks down our communities and alienates us and individualizes us together and does not build strong community bonds. Because the issue is that I do not watch my neighbors, but I see my neighbors and I interact with my neighbors. So I hope that and encourage that the budget and reflects those priorities and does not include funding for the real-time intelligence center. Thank you.
Thank you. James Clark.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Aldermen, ladies and gentlemen, want to first start by giving thanks to God, who's the giver and the sustainer of all of our lives. And as we look at what is going on in our community, we have to ask ourselves, how does he feel about what's going on? When I look at what is going on in our community right now, this was predicted. Two years ago, I was interviewed live on Channel Two, and I said, "We are not prepared for the spring and summer of two thousand fourteen." And then they said, "Well, Mr. Clark, how can you say that in this two thousand twelve?" I was in the homes. I was on the front porches. I was in the neighborhoods, and I was interacting with young people who I knew were not given the social skills necessary to assimilate into mainstream. And I said, "This group of young people will be able to leave their parents' immediate area when they turn fourteen years old." They turned fourteen this spring. And now we see what they're bringing to the table. Someone said earlier that we hit a peak, and then we're going to hit a valley. I'm telling you today that we're not ready for the spring and summer of two thousand fourteen, fifteen, sixteen, seventeen, and eighteen. We have allowed our neighborhoods to become incubators, and they are creating young people who are socially dysfunctional and apt to crime and violence. We know exactly where these neighborhoods are. I parallel it to Hurricane Katrina. When we watched for four days, and we asked ourselves, when are they going to come in with the resources? We watched the water flood people's homes and neighborhoods. Day two, we watched people on their roofs with signs saying, "Help me." Day three, we watched people huddle into the Superdome. By day four, we were watching people die live on television. And we asked ourselves again, when are they going to come in with the resources? You see, they could have dropped water from the air. They could have dropped food from the air. They could have dropped medicine from the air. Now we got to ask ourselves, we know where our neighborhoods are. I'm forty-seven years old, grew up in the JBL neighborhood. Many of you are from the urban core. And since we were children, we've watched our neighborhoods fall into grave disrepair, and now they're literally war zones. And we often talk about the young people, but the, but the largest victim is our senior citizens. Too many of our senior citizens have seen their neighborhoods deplore right before their very eyes. And we've got to get serious about a better family life. We've been working a program now for the last five years called the Neighborhood Alliance. In this model, we draw very, very strict maps. We don't need to try to fight crime and violence throughout the whole city. It's too large. We've learned that from the St. Louis City Police Department. They call it hotspot policing. We've got to take that same approach with our neighborhoods. And we've got to go in, and we've got to deliver resources. In this Neighborhood Alliance model, we go door to door. We do an assessment on everyone in the household. They need more than jobs. We need drug treatment. We need mentoring programs. We need prenatal care. We, we need senior citizen services. We need clinical help. Our, in our neighborhoods, clinical help is so dire and so desperately needed. When we feel stress and anger, we smoke a blunt or we buy liquor that's readily available. So I am asking that this group, and not just this group, but that the entire city, take a, take a look at how we do business. It is not the downtown area that we should be focusing on. If we continue to ignore our neighborhoods, everything that we are building up downtown will be destroyed. It will be destroyed. So it is time for us to get serious. In this model, crime is down double digits in the area that we work with. And right now, we are working primarily with a group of volunteers, people who are committed because they're tired, because they know that the solution is simple. Going into our neighborhoods and giving individuals the resources that they need to improve the quality of their life, their family life, and the life of our neighborhoods, which would then improve the quality of life in the entire city of St. Louis. Thank you very much.
Rhonda?
Smith, thank you. My name is Rhonda Smith. I work for TrailNet. We're at four-eleven North Tenth Street downtown. Thank you for allowing the public comment on this session tonight. I'm really excited about the budget, even though I don't understand a lot of it. So thanks for opening it up. Between two thousand six and two thousand ten, there were one thousand eight hundred and twenty-two pedestrian and motor vehicle crashes in the city of St. Louis. This was two percent of all crashes, but comprises thirty-six percent of all fatalities in the city. Based on this high number of pedestrian deaths, the Federal, the Federal Highways Commission has designated St. Louis City as a pedestrian-focused city, publicly declaring the dangers of walking in St. Louis City. Along with the pedestrian-focused city designation, there came the opportunity for funding to increase the safety of our streets. Unfortunately, there was not enough of a coordinated approach, and St. Louis did not receive any funding. We have been asking the mayor's administration and Director Walterman for years to create a bicycle and pedestrian coordinator position, whose sole job it is to coordinate infrastructure, education, and engineering that will create safe roads for every person, regardless of whether they're walking, biking, taking transit, or driving. We have been repeatedly told that there is not money in the budget. With your budget documents, I can see that the streets budget is thirty-four point nine million dollars. The division working specifically on streets has a projected personnel budget of almost five point two million dollars. I propose that one of these positions is cut and replaced with a bicycle and pedestrian coordinator. Given that the St., the city of St. Louis has a complete streets policy, that the mayor's sustainability action agenda has a line item to advocate for transportation plans and funding that allow more people to be less car-dependent, and that we are trying to maintain our current residents and attract new ones, these people value living in a walkable, bikeable city. Every person in this room is a pedestrian at one point or another, whether it's walking from your car to the front door of your job, whether it's walking your kid to school, whether it's walking the dog after work. Thirty-six percent of all deaths in the city are for people walking, being hit by cars. I seriously encourage you to consider cutting an existing position within the Streets Department and replacing it with a position of a bicycle and pedestrian coordinator, so we can have safe streets for everyone. Thank you.
Thank you.
I wonder if you know that the maintenance of city roads and sidewalks is not very centralized in the city. In fact, we have, outside of that Streets Department budget, we have capital improvement budget, where the money is divided by Ward, and each of us are kind of responsible for our own sidewalks and not giving very much money sometimes. So I think one of the biggest causes of these accidents is in many of our neighborhoods, the sidewalks are so bad that people walk in the street.
Absolutely.
And so I think, I agree with you, that the city needs to take a centralized responsibility to the maintenance of our roads and our sideways, our sidewalks. So I just want you to know that.
I really appreciate your support, and I understand that each of you is kind of operating as a planner in your own district, and to just think how great it would be to have someone who you could call on, whose expertise lied in creating safe streets for everyone, and what a resource that could be for our elected officials.
Alderwoman Creusen had in.
I was interested, you say thirty-six percent. Do me that statistic again, if you want.
So thirty-six percent of all fatalities are pedestrian and motor vehicle fatalities. And that came out of a study that didn't even come from here. The University of North Carolina has a Highway Traffic Research Center, and they did a study because St. Louis had received this designation as a pedestrian-focused city.
So either killed in a car accident or killed in a walk, a combination of the two.
And I'll be happy to follow up to the committee with their report.
No, that's fine. I was just trying to hear the numbers and make sense out of it.
Sure.
Okay. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you. Shante Turner.
So, good evening, board.
Good evening.
My name is Mrs. Turner Starks. I represent, I'm the block captain, and I represent one of the blocks in the Washington Avenue in the heart of the Central West End. So I'm not sure if this is considered a pro or a con. So I'm pro that we have a budget. Great. I'm con, because I have some concerns, as well as our taxpaying residents, as to how those funds are being distributed. as well as our tax-paying residents, as to how those funds are being distributed. So you have here your capital improvements bond issue. Over $320 million in capital projects identified. Amongst that list are the derelict buildings. Well, the derelict building demolition. We hear this every year. Every year, it's the same old story. We're going to demolish buildings, and the buildings are still there. So my concern is, is that once you get this budget, how these funds are distributed to these different wards. So when we get to these different various wards, there seems to be a challenge in getting those funds. So as I represent the tax-paying residents, particularly in my block, in the core, in the heart of the Central West End, there seems to be a double standard with the city of St. Louis. So the city of St. Louis is asking us taxpayers to improve our properties, maintain our properties. They give us these citations.
When you turn around, we can't hear.
Oh, absolutely. Let me start again. There's a double standard in the city of St. Louis. So the city of St. Louis is asking us tax-paying residents to improve our properties and maintain those properties. Well, I can vouch that on my street, we have tax-paying residents who are maintaining their properties. Well, the city of St. Louis is not upholding to those same standards. So if you're telling me to maintain my property, I'm looking at these demolished buildings, these derelict buildings, nuisance properties that you're not maintaining. We have six-foot-tall trees. We have, you know, grass growing, you know, 10 feet tall. So you're asking us to do something, but you're not upholding the same rules. So what I'm asking is, first of all, with the citations, the taxpayers' dollars, the city of St. Louis is using the building inspectors to issue out citations. Well, some of these citations are very trivial. For example, flower beds are too high. The rail is slightly leaning. Or you have more than one fence, and you need to take one down. Those are trivial citations, especially when these are properties that are already being maintained. And when we look and see that there are vacant lots with weeds growing, and then there are nuisance properties where there's illegal rooming houses going on, there's drug trafficking going on, that's where your citations need to be going, not to the taxpayers that are maintaining their properties. So what I'm asking you to do, I know you cannot demolish every building in the city of St. Louis, but what I'm asking you to do is to engage the residents, for instance, the residents that have organized committees who are interested in maintaining their blocks, who are also willing to volunteer, to even put up some of their own funds to make improvements in their neighborhood. So I'm asking you to look at those funds and engage those residents who are willing to engage you back and give back to that community and improve their neighborhoods. So if we want to get, you know, blocks painted, or if we want to have trees cut down, or if we want foliage, or we want buildings demolished, listen to the residents that are coming to you and asking you to demolish the buildings. Those, some people may want to live next to demolished buildings. Why are you demolishing buildings if people aren't complaining? Those are the ones that are complaining. Listen to us. Because, as the young lady said, we voted you in, we can vote you out. And that means everybody. I'm not just talking to my, I'm not saying Alderman, Kennedy. I'm saying all of the board. Listen to what we're saying. We're tax-paying residents, and we're asking you to listen to this voice. Give us the money to demolish these derelict properties and get rid of this drug activity and all these nuisance properties. Thank you.
Okay, you got something? She's going to talk. I believe there was a question for...
For me?
Yes.
I believe it is.
I am sorry to say, but we barely have control over those funds ourselves. I get about $200,000 a year for demolition. And I get a quarter-inch stack of houses. I have 842 houses to demolish. And I can only pick out 24 out of 842. That's all the budget will allow me to turn out. Since I've been in office for seven years, I've torn down over 600 buildings. I just can't turn out the whole community. So we're stuck in a rock and hard place. And you've got some great ideas. And we really would like to talk to you after this meeting.
Well, thank you for engaging me. And I understand that you cannot demolish all those buildings. And that's why I'm strongly suggesting that you listen to the residents who are coming forth, who have organized committees, such as our block. We have an organized committee. I am the block captain for that particular block. And we're asking, we're reaching out, and we're saying, "We want these buildings torn down." And we're even saying that if we can get, you know, volunteers, we will go in, volunteer, and plant bushes and shrubbery, and do the things that are necessary to make our street look beautiful. So we're asking you to just engage us. You can't demolish every building. We understand that. And what we're hoping this to convey is that, I know that you're kind of between a rock and a hard place, but I want Francis, I want Slay to listen to this as well. Give you all the money. Because there are residents, and just like we said, we voted him in, we can vote Slay out as well. So we're asking Slay to give you all the money so that you can get these buildings demolished and focus on these nuisance properties. Because when we call you and say there's a nuisance property, we're not calling for, just because we want to. It's a nuisance property, and it needs to go away.
Okay, thank you. Next we have Ann Hamilton.
Good evening. I'd like to thank my alderman, Mr. Terry Kennedy, for starting this. Because this is a good thing. This is a good thing. Well, you know, I live in the 5th Ward now, because it changed from the 18th, but it is Alderman Kennedy's Ward. And I'm with the Federation of Block Units. That is an organization under the Urban League. And I am the second vice president for the 5th Ward. So we meet monthly at Rankin Tech. We were a part of the Weed and Seed Program when they were putting seed into it, which is money. And we ran out, so we are continuing to meet with weed and seeds. So we get reports from police departments and from our aldermen and from somebody from the mayor's office and the civil rights office, et cetera, et cetera. So we have kind of good meetings. The place that we meet at, we get them. Some, the lady said that about helping to tear down buildings. We get some of these big organizations that we meet at to help us in getting rid of some of these derelict buildings. So I would suggest you all take part in that also. But I was standing for, I retired from St. Louis Public Schools. And I know from working with parental involvement that there is a great need for our parents to be held accountable. Those parents that aren't doing anything, this is not for you. But for those parents who are not being accountable for their children's actions, which is some of the reasons why we're here, to be honest. Because we have children that are destroying properties. We have children that are in gangs. We have children that are not going to school. So we don't see those people that used to ride around and take them to jail or whatever if they didn't go to school. So a lot of this hanging out, et cetera, is causing us a problem. So the way we see it is that a lot of our schools are closed that are in the neighborhoods that our children were used to going to. So when you start busing them in other areas where they have no friends, no homies, no contacts, then of course, they're going to act out because they're in a strange area. If they were in the area that they lived in, I think they would be, like we were back in the day, more accountable to that particular area. So that's something that we needed to work out a long time ago. We seem to have passed that up. So if we're really thinking about our children, from my working in the St. Louis Public Schools, I know that they did stop the after-school program, which was very, very good for our children. It's gone. So now our children after school are out on the street doing nothing. And now summer is coming. They don't have the slave jobs because they have a limited, very limited amount of slave jobs that they give. So those kids without slave jobs are going to be a problem this summer. I was asked that, what would we ask the parents to do to be more accountable? You know, to show more accountability. I would ask that this board come up with some funds that we can use, because I would put it under crime, that we can use to help these parents, to help their children. And if it be programs like cleaning out these vacant lots in their ward, in their block, that they clean out the vacant lots and that they be accountable for keeping that vacant lot clean, planting flowers, vegetable gardens, or whatever on that particular block. We have a school that I look at now, and Alderman Moore, this is not to say anything about you because I see you doing a lot. But the school, because I go in that area a lot, is on Martin Luther King and Newstead. Marshall School. To me, that can be a wonderful school for after-school programs in some way set up like the Better Family Life. Having programs in it like it did back in the day when they had Arthur Kennedy, where you could go and learn a trade, where some of the kids could be able to play, you know, ball, or we could have people to come in and teach our children how to do more than play baseball and basketball, but hockey and soccer, and give them science and math, and give them reading, et cetera, in this building. And I think all of us here tonight that came up back in the day had those in our neighborhoods that made us more feasible, feeling more protective, and feeling more good about our own neighborhood. That if we dropped a piece of paper, we felt like picking it up. So I think that we can open up some of these schools that have been sitting there forever and are now being used as drug places where they congregate in the summertime, and they do their thing, and even with the kids' playgrounds on that property. So I think we have to show ourselves that we are doing something to help our children before our children do something to help us. So I'm asking if we can set aside some funds that, this is for those kids that are acting out. Maybe they're on probation and parole, maybe, you know, for those minor things. That their parents and them be accountable in helping to beautify our city. Now, I got one other thing, and I'll sit down. The one lady who made the statements about the one side of Del Mar, I'm on that side of Del Mar. And what we're asking to have happen is that, because now it's getting to be that the traffic kind of speeds up when it gets past King's Highway going towards Grand. So we would like that island that you have in the middle of the street that stops at King's Highway to continue down past, past where the school lives, corner of Ritter School, or even further, if you can put it on the other side. But we're concerned about our area. And we thank our alderman because we have a lot of things going on in the 5th Ward. Thank you.
Our next speaker is, I believe it's Maureen Nolan. Did I pronounce it incorrectly? You're not? You're fine? Okay. Jasmine? Yes.
Good evening. My name is Jasmine Mauer. I'm at 3318 Wyoming. And I wanted to kind of address some of the, some issues with public safety. Kind of going back to the bond bill. We had seen that the police department requested in this bill being a real-time intelligence center, which is something that I'm hoping will be removed from the bond issue. Because this is not a capital improvement, as someone before me has said, this will be changing how policing happens in the city of St. Louis. And also, having more transparency with the four-year-15 bill budget as well, and ensuring that there will not be money diverted to building this center once it's taken out of the bond bill. And kind of having more public discussions about how we want to effectively address the concern of crime in our neighborhoods in the city of St. Louis. We would, I would like to see kind of more involvement of the people. There's been a lot of great suggestions that have actually come up tonight about how we can address crime. Using mass surveillance has not proven very effective, from what I've seen so far, in being able to reduce the amount of crime in neighborhoods. There's some negative ramifications of having this kind of surveillance, increased anxiety in people. Folks are no longer as engaged as they normally are if they feel like they're being watched. There's lots of proven strategies to help reduce crime, like investing in younger people in the community, investing in street lights, investing in kind of community improvements, and so that folks have kind of the resources that they need. Also, at this moment, there's, we lack the adequate privacy regulations to protect people from this type of surveillance by the police. It's unclear to me how long this data is going to be kept, how the police are going to use it. Will they need a search warrant for it? To me, it sounds like they will not. And so those are things that are very concerning to me, and I would really like to have more of a public conversation about this. So thank you.
Thank you. We are nearing the end of our list. We'll call the next individuals, Ms. Henrietta Param.
I'd like to take this time to thank you. My name is Henrietta Param. I'd like to take this time to thank you for long time overdue having a meeting like this. And I want to thank all of the alderpeople for doing this. And I think it's wonderful for us to air out some of our dirty laundry, if we possibly can. The first thing that I want to talk about is funds for senior citizens for home repair is badly needed. In our areas, more money is spent in demolition and tearing houses down than giving monies to do the repairs that are needed. Like, it takes, I guess, from $8,000 to $13,000 to tear a house down when some of the senior citizens, some of these houses in our area may need just maybe $8,000 to maybe put a roof on the house to do the plumbing. And you know, our housing stock is very valuable in the city of St. Louis. We have a lot of heirloom houses here. And people come from all over the world to see our neighborhoods, to come in our area and see the houses that we have, and they're just being torn down. The other thing I want to talk about is water. No one can make water, but we're constantly abusing it. We need to do something about the conservation of our water. Even in our city, right now, we're undergoing problems with the water. What monies and what steps are being taken to better take care of this, to make sure that we'll have clean water the rest of our lives? Because we're getting in a crisis because there's a lot of places do not have what we have here. We're sitting on a golden plum. We have two rivers, Missouri River and Mississippi River. There's some cities that do not have water at all. And we're constantly abusing it. Also, we're abusing the land with all this concrete that, instead of doing something with the houses that we have and the stock that we have, we go someplace else, destroy the soil, put up the concrete jungles. You can't eat concrete. You can't do anything with it. You know, you don't have a landfill for it. So you have to start taking care of it. And along with that, we don't take care of the air. Some measures need to be put in for greening in our city. The other thing, as Anna talked about, and Mr. Clark, about our youth. Our youth, we're bleeding to death. In our areas, we got, most kids in our area have seen one to five murders. Nothing is being done, no mental health, no type of health programs at all for these kids. And we wonder why kids have anger, why they knock out windows, why they break glass. Because of the stress. Nothing has been set up, no programs. Also, too, when monies come in this area for our youth, we want it spent on the youth instead of going into some kind of flush fund. I don't know where the money's going, but it's not going to the area where it was earmarked for. That's bad. The other thing that I want to talk about is that for being accountable, what plan do you have, or what measures have you set up to make sure that the monies that come in for the budget, the funds, that it actually be spent for that? Like, if money comes in here for senior citizens' home repair, what plan do you have to make sure it goes there? Because you can see in the north side, it hasn't come our area yet. The funds that have come in for the past 40 years have definitely been diverted. You can go, it's proof, when you see all the vacant lots in our area, that the money sure didn't come there. One minute? Okay. You know what? I can get on the road, and I could talk for all day and all night without stopping. But, you know, if money comes in here for our youth, as Mr. Clark and Anna has already talked about, you know, I hope it gets down to you that it's needed for our children. They are our future. And whatever garbage you put in, you get garbage out. And if you don't invest right now... And if you don't invest right now in their health, and also the health plan in our area, it's very bad. No good places to go. We don't have a trauma center at all on the North Side. That's bad. If there's a gunshot wound for them to take you, what, over 12 miles to a trauma center or to emergency room, that is bad. There's money, you need to take care of it. I think I better stop right now.
Erica Strong. There's a comment first.
Oh. I just, I just want, for the last lady to speak, I just want to let you know that I had worked with MSD over five years ago to start the rain barrels. So you, so you could purchase rain barrels from MSD, and if you can't afford them, you can put them on your bill and slowly pay them off. The other part of that is that if you do have concrete and you take it up on your property, they actually do, once a year, they take a property, picture everyone's property in here, and if you increase the amount of heat that comes off your property, that means you've laid concrete, you've covered soil, and they're going to increase your bill. If you've taken it away, they will actually lower your bill if you take concrete up. And the last part on that is I've been working at the state level to try and get credits, tax credits, for people who will take up concrete, so that we have more places for the water to go. So I, I want to let you know that there has been work done in that area. It's just, it's, as always, it just is so slow-going and can be so frustrating, because I'm always big on moving concrete. I don't like concrete coming down. Anytime we can put the soil back, I'm all for it.
Well, in our area, we do have a process where, where the vacant lots are, we can't eat that grass. We plant, we try to put a garden there. And in our area, in the 18th Ward, where the berries are, we got flowers growing there. Because green things keep the air clean, because the plants give off oxygen. Yet, we have rain barrels. We realize, that's the point that I tried to make to you, that water is important. There's people that's dying because they don't have clean water to drink. So you got to do everything right now. No, it's not all the way, all the time about profit. Sometimes it's simple things, especially when we can't create water. These are things that only God can do. We can't do it. So you got to preserve everything. I spend at least six hours a day doing gardening, cleaning alleys. You could, my Alder person could tell you about that. Because I worry y'all, don't I?
Ms. Strong.
Thank you. Good evening, everyone. My name is Erica Strong. I am a resident at 5046 Vernon, and also a very proud citizen of the 18th Ward. I'm here to kind of reiterate what's been said several times by some of our educators and our elders and other concerned citizens. I stand here for, before you as a product of the St. Louis Public School System, at a time where we did have after-school programming, at a time where we did have very healthy school lunches, at a time that there were, there was a very focused effort to ensure that the children were healthy and we were getting the things that we needed. So I'm here to, I guess, basically speak on what's been said before, and to our Aldermen who said before, is that you hear our plea, our call, to ensure that there is more money focused on our public schools. We have a rising level of obesity in our children. As we see, a lot of our children are growing up and having, even at the age of 12 and 13, having indications of diabetes, of heart disease. So there is a need to focus in on our after-school programs, healthier lunches and health programs, as well as after-school extracurricular activities, as was spoken earlier about the fact that many of our youth are finding themselves out in the streets with nothing to do. So it is our, it is our role, you know, as people who are sitting in this room and making decisions, as well as yours, to ensure that we stop this, this cycle that is continuing to happen within our community. As well as ensure our children have computers, have ways to continue to advance their minds. We look at different countries across the world where, I'm not even sure where US, the US ranks anymore, where it comes around education, to math, and to science. But our children are failing, and it's our responsibility to ensure that we don't. I want to refer to something that was said by Mama Jamila earlier, Mama Jamila earlier about the fact that it is easier to build strong children than to repair broken men and women. So as decisions are being made about our budget, that we keep those things in mind. Again, I think the youth has been, has been a topic that's been said over and over again. So just to ensure that those things are considered. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. We just have two other individuals, Mr. Ronald Stamps.
Good evening, everybody. My name is Ronald Stamps, and I'm a member of about seven, eight different organizations. And I'm here to say that I'm familiar with Terry trying to get this police oversight review committee started some years ago, and at the last minute, that Mayor Slay vetoed it, so therefore it was put on the table. So now it's time again, since we have local control of the police department, we should hold them accountable to the people who pays their salaries. Not so much as them deciding how they want to police, we need to be able to tell them what we want them to do, as opposed to them telling us what they're going to do. And still, we're paying the bill for something that we're not getting the receiving. That's all I had to say.
All right, thank you. And our last speaker is Ms. Pat Miller.
Good evening. My name is Pat Miller, and I'm in the 18th Ward, and I live at 1117 there. This has been discussed, I just want to add on to the issue of the vacant buildings, and the impact that they have in our neighborhoods. They affect our quality of life, they affect our property values. The chief of police has stated that a lot of crime comes into the neighborhood when the neighborhood looks like it's not cared for, that there's nobody living there. And the vacant buildings look, and it's like it's an epidemic, and it's nothing that we can do about. So I stand here this morning, this evening, asking you, appealing to you, can you please increase the funding for vacant buildings to tear them down? They're also a haven for crime. And if you have a school in the area and the kids pass by that building, something could happen to the children. In comparison, in the recent election, they were telling me about the improvements downtown. I said, "That's wonderful." But I can't get downtown, because if I go down and come back, I may not get back in my house that time of night. So I could understand that, but we want to be a part of the party, too. And being part of the party means that there's some effort to let us know that these buildings did not come here to stay. We have no power except when we come to you and let you know, this is an epidemic in our community. We deserve better. Tell us something, do something. But we, it is unacceptable for us to continue to have to pay, people coming in our neighborhood dumping trash, then we have these buildings. It is unacceptable, and we deserve better. So will you please consider increasing the budget and taking down the derelict buildings? Thank you.
That completes all of those we had signed up to make testimony today. Again, we thank you for coming out and raising the issues that you did in the way that you did, so that our committee can better consider this when it sits down tomorrow and the next days, and looks at its recommendations to go back to the Board of Estimate and Apportionment. I'd just like to also point out that we have our budget director here in the rear of the room, Mr. Paul Payne. If you can raise his hand. If you have any other detailed questions about the budget, he'll be happy to answer. That's how you throw it off on someone else. But he really is very informed and can give you some good information about the budget. Also, on the table, where the secretary I work with, her name is Tina Johnson, at that table, you'll also find, I guess, I'm pointing everyone out. We should have some surveys for you to give your thoughts, a questionnaire about your thoughts about this meeting and us doing these types of hearings. Again, this is only the second year that this committee has done this. And there is nothing in the charter that requires this committee to hold this type of public hearing. We did it as a vision, as I said, to broaden the dialogue about the budget, involving more people, and to hear so that this committee could really begin to consider what to do with the budget based upon hearing from those in the community. So it is, and it is a venture, an attempt to do something different with this entire budget process. Are we exactly where we'd like to be with this process? No. But we're headed in that direction. Last year, there were some changes in the budget based upon the testimonies here, and I believe that we may see some in this budget based upon these testimonies. What is difficult is having the reporting back process so that you know it actually happened. We may, in fact, try to hold another meeting, I don't know, but our committee will discuss that and to see which direction we will go. It is difficult sometimes, because when you do good things, you don't always hear that in the media. But do something crazy, you hear it right away. So it makes it a little bit more difficult, but we're going to endeavor to make sure that any changes based upon this discussion and this testimony today, you can get some feedback about what has happened from here. Again, we thank you for coming out. Don't forget about the surveys over at the table, and we're here for further discussions, if you like. We do have to be out of the library at a certain time, because they do close the doors. But thank you again for coming. Meeting is adjourned. It's adjourned.